It's on.
Evening, I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Norwalk Common Council for October seventeenth at two thousand and twenty-two.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the redevelopment agency this evening.
If you'll join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance to our nation. If you please remain standing for a moment. As you know, this past week, two police officers from the Bristol, Connecticut Police Department were ambushed and murdered. Another was wounded. That's why you see the flags flying half-staffed throughout the city. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. Ms. Dixon, if you please call the role of the common counsel.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Goldstein. Ms. Johnson. Ms. Najelski Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith. Here. Ms. Ayers.
Here.
Mr. Hubelmann.
Present.
Ms. Revolus.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Ms. Revolus is here.
Oh, Ms. Revolus. I got you. Ms. Young. Mr. Kybes.
Here.
He's here, but we.
I'm here.
Ms. McMur.
Present.
Ms. Alterman.
Here.
She's also here.
Mr. Meek.
Here.
Mr. Livingston.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan. Mr. Goldstein. Ms. Johnson. Ms. Young. Ms. Shanahan. We have eleven. We have a quorum.
We have Mary Peniston.
Here.
Billy Blue. Lisa Cooper.
Yeah.
David, what's your role here then? And myself, you're all present.
Thank you. So we'll have public participation, Ms. Dixon, if you'll bring the signing sheet. Uh, Mr. Coppola. There's something acceptance of the call that hasn't been on here before. Would you explain what that is, please? Because we haven't had that on any of the agendas in the past.
We've got this with regard to taking the, uh, to taking a vote to go into executive session. Wh- which is something that you'll do at some point on the agenda. So I have to see where it is on the agenda. That was the.
It's got to be after public participation then.
Yeah, so you can move, you move to the end if you'd like.
All right.
Thank you.
And now we'll start public participation. Please limit your time to three minutes. Uh, we'll give you a little bit of a signal once you're about thirty seconds out. And obviously, there's only one item on the agenda, and you have to stick to items on the agenda for discussion.
For speaker, Mr. Mulligan.
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 Pardon me?
I didn't see that.
Not that I know of. We don't even know if anybody is on Zoom right now. Okay, well, first, you're up first, so you're on, you're the one that's here with signed up, so.
Well, since there's two meetings, we've already had the council of the six minutes.
No.
Good evening, Jason Milligan, eleven Beldon Avenue, Norwalk. There's lots of talk about following the rules in the city, especially when directed towards me. Uh, and I'd like us all to realize it cuts both ways. I recently obtained and read the common council rules. They were adopted in nineteen eighty-five and recently amended and approved again in June of two thousand and twenty-two. Rule twenty-two states that public participation is encouraged. The rules also include a code of conduct for Norwalk Common Council members to adhere to. You should be guided by what is best for their constituents and the city of Norwalk. To encourage and respect the free expression of opinions by stakeholders. To encourage participation of others. To consider alternative, alternate viewpoints and revise opinions as appropriate when presented with new information. And perhaps most importantly, to abide by the city's code of ethics to avoid any conflict of interest before council or committee action. And recuse themselves from any discussion or action if appropriate. And to abide by the rules of the common council. It is a shame that I have been censored and that public participation has been discouraged. I've tried for years to have this conversation. Now I get three minutes. I hope it's enough. I am the largest owner of property in the Wall Street area by a wide margin. I spend the majority of my time in and around Wall Street. I'm there six days a week, sometimes seven. I have close to two hundred tenants in the area. I'm the largest taxpayer. I've invested millions and millions of dollars into Wall Street. I donate my time and my money to nonprofit organizations working in the area. I have commissioned approximately a hundred public works of art in the area. I have a huge personal stake in the Wall Street area, and I want nothing for the best for Wall Street. Mario Coppola is a part-time employee that lives in New Haven County, who also represents a dozen, dozen other cities. Mario has been in charge of all the legal decisions for the city for the past eight years. His decisions benefit himself and his favored law firms and are not in the best interest of Norwalk and not in the best interest of Wall Street. His advice has put the city in its position regarding Poco.
Mr. Milligan.
Mario forgave Ken Olson's numerous defaults.
Mr. Milligan.
Mario changed the rules and the agreements to try to make work.
I don't want to be.
Mario negotiated the nondisclosure agreement that made discussions with McClutchie secret. The fact that Mario has been in charge of Poco since two thousand and fifteen, and seven years later, it is a complete mess, suggests that someone else should advise the council. Mario has been the sole communicator to the council. The council only hears information that passes through Mario's bias filter. Does Mario want a settlement that would make himself look bad? Who's looking over Mario's shoulder? What recourse is there for Mario's bad decisions? Mario has personal animosity towards me, and he has huge conflicts of interest that I will not use my three minutes tonight to discuss. If there is curiosity about those conflicts and any doubt about them, I am happy to have a longer conversation about them anytime, anywhere, with anyone. Mario has recently publicly stated that he is busting at the seams and missing seeing his family because he is so busy. For all those reasons and more, it is past time to get a fresh set of eyes involved with Poco. Mario Coppola really recues himself from Poco entirely, but at the absolute least, there needs to be some independent perspectives and counsel. If you didn't interrupt me, I would have been done. How can members of the common council put their reputations on the line by allowing Mario to continue making the decisions and filtering all the information? There should be members of the council from both political parties involved at the mediation this Thursday the twentieth. It will be heard remotely, so council members should and could attend via Zoom.
Mr. Milligan.
If we have people involved with open minds who seek what is in the best interest of Norwalk, then we will be able to settle the lawsuit at mediation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank God you didn't have to interrupt me.
Well, you have to follow the rules too. You're the one talking about the rules. You're talking about the rules, you have to follow them too. Who's next?
Ms. Smernopoulos.
Ms. Smernopoulos.
Thank you. Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. When the city was being sued by Fire Tree, I was called to a meeting with Corporation Counsel Mario Coppola to discuss a settlement. It was the winter of two thousand and eighteen. A few minutes into the meeting, it was clear that Mr. Coppola wasn't on the side of the Quintard families. He even argued that drug rehab for twelve in a C resident zone.
That's not a topic of discussion for this meeting.
It is, if you will let me.
You're talking about Quintard Avenue.
Excuse me, excuse me, mayor.
No.
I, I, this is not a good look for you to be trampling on the rights of citizens. I am following the rules and I am going to.
On the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
We'll give you another chance. Go ahead.
Let me read what I have written. It is about the lawsuits of this city. They are all tied together. Mr. Coppola even argued for drug rehab and for twelve in a C resident zone was the same as rehab for twenty persons. The city spent over half a million dollars with Halloran and Sage fighting the Fire Tree lawsuit and another six hundred thousand dollars to settle it. When they could have bought the property for one million dollars and made the neighborhood whole again. So why didn't the city just buy the house? Ask Mario. A short time later, it was announced that Ventura law had been retained by the city to represent Norwalk in the opioid lawsuits. Ventura had taken on Ed Camacho as a partner in August of two thousand and seventeen. Camacho was also chair at the time of both the Democratic Town Committee and the Board of Estimate and Taxation, as well as personal lawyer to the mayor. The prelude to the Ventura retainer was the formation of a three-person committee, Michael Corsello, Richard Bonifant, and Mario Coppola, to choose a law firm to represent the city in opioid litigation matters. The committee interviewed three firms, two of which were non-conflicted. They chose the firm with the conflict of interest. They chose Ventura. When I read about the Ventura retainer, retainer, I saw a city compromised by multiple conflicts of interest. Surely, I thought, once the right people were made aware of these COIs, we would correct course. So I can file a complaint with the Board of Ethics. And when I began to dig deeper, I discovered that it wasn't simply the choice of Ventura that was an ethical dilemma for the city. The role of Mr. Coppola in choosing Ventura, it turned out, was the bigger problem. I collected evidence implicating Mr. Coppola in steering his committee to recommend Ventura to the common council over the other two non-conflicted choices. I submitted that evidence to the Board of Ethics via the Law Department because there was no other place to share it. That envelope was sealed with tape, signed across the seal, and marked confidential, and Mr. Coppola opened that envelope because he could. Because Mr. Coppola was and still is liaison to the Board of Ethics. Mr. Coppola chose Ventura. Corsello went along for the ride, and Bonifant was bypassed in that decision. Later during executive session, when Mr. Bonifant tried to warn the council about the conflict of interest, he was shut down by Mr. Coppola. Mr. Livingston, you were on the council when that vote was taken. And Ms. Najelski Eichner, you were on the Board of Ethics that chose to not pursue that case. Because there's no probable cause.
You're at three minutes.
From the mosque settlement to Fire Tree to Ventura to Poco, the city leans on one man, Mario Coppola, for legal advice. Mr. Coppola also apparently serves as personal lawyer to the mayor. But the real benefits to this cozy arrangement accrue during campaign season when all those law firms we lean on to represent the city and our various legal entitlements. Law firms who make millions at our expense, open up their wallets and give to the mayor's reelection campaign. Anyone who's ever done anything involving a lawyer knows that a conflict of interest is something we are meant to either avoid or disclose. Doing neither is wrong, it's unethical, but the Law Department under Coppola is buried under conflicts of interest. It's time for the council to put an end to the Poco mess. Yes, I'd love for Mario to devote his energies full-time to helping rich people in Greenwich avoid affordable housing, but I know that's a big ask. And I'm not sure the mayor would know how to get along without him.
Ms. Smernopoulos.
But at least recognize that the time to move forward on Wall Street is long past, and that there is nothing to be gained by a trial. And that we're not only tired of looking at the Tyvek Temple, we are also tired of paying the legal bills. Thank you.
We're going to have to insist that people take, stick to three minutes, please. Who's next?
Mr. David Rubin.
Um, hello, can you see me or do you want to see me?
We can see you.
Okay, great. Um, thank you for the opportunity to be heard. Um, initially, just please bear with me, I have COVID and I have a brain fog, so anything that, you know, just, just be aware of that, please. Um, I'm, I'm here to use my three minutes for purposes of talking about mediation in general. Uh, and the benefits of, of what is available to everybody on Thursday. And also a couple of updates on the litigation, just to make sure everybody's aware. Initially, I've been practicing for thirty years, and I don't think I've ever had a case where both sides, the cost and the expense for both sides is so disproportionate to what is being fought over. That's people's rights, it's municipalities' rights, it is what it is. But I'm a huge proponent of mediation. I've been asking for mediation in this case for years, and I'm very pleased that the court ordered that the mediation proceed. Um, over the course of the last two weeks. Uh, the court entered an order that I think it's important for everybody to understand. We had moved for a jury trial. The city and the RDA opposed the jury trial. The court, two weeks ago, granted the jury trial on all issues. Um, I tell you that just because it's important to understand that if anybody tells you that they know what a jury is going to do. They've never tried a case in front of a jury. Uh, this is a case that is a huge problem that is crying out for a solution. And in, in, and I've told Jason the same thing that I'm saying to you here. Mediation is a real opportunity. It provides finality. Uh, unlike a jury, you control your own destiny. And I would very much encourage, uh, as many of you who could take an active role or just be aware of what is being discussed on Thursday, to involve yourself to that end. Um, secondly, this is not a, right now, this case is supposed to be tried in March and April. It, I could be wrong, I'm wrong all the time. I don't think that this case is going to be tried in April. Um, the, the, the city and the RDA just lost a motion for summary judgment against the Olsen widow who has appealed. That appeal is going to take a year. Uh, Olsen widow is not going to want this case tried without her because obviously she's not going to want to have to retry the case if she loses the appeal. And I am going to oppose the case going forward in the trial now because I need to know whether the Olsen widow is a party or an empty chair. The city said she's an indispensable party to this litigation, and now she's out of the litigation because the city didn't commence within the statute of limitations, according to the judge. I say that for the purpose of mediation has finality and the time and money, and additional money that is going to be spent on this case over the next year and a half is astronomical.
You're over three minutes, Mr. Rubin, if you would start to wrap it up.
Uh, thank you very much, I appreciate that, mayor. I will wrap it up. Um, I, I, that's it, that's it. Um, please take the mediation seriously. It is in everybody's best interest.
Thank you.
Next.
We have a Kristen Hugak as sitting in there. I don't know who that would be.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
How are you guys? It's good to hear this chat, it's good to be involved. Um, my only.
Could, could you wait one minute? Uh, we're still in public session. Uh, did you sign in or how?
I just got the link, I live here on Wall Street. I'm a participant, I live here. That's how I got the link.
Okay, well, we're going to go through particip, public participation, then if you wish to speak, you can raise your hand.
Thank you.
Yes, and just for the record, Brian Meek, Councilman Meek, left the meeting at seven ten.
Um, the next speaker is Peyton Turner. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Peyton Cosell Turner, I'm a homeowner in Norwalk, and I also have a business in Norwalk off of Knights, off of Wall Street on Knight Street. And I've been hearing a lot about how much Milligan Realty loves and supports Wall Street, but I don't see that in my daily drive to my office. Um, I see empty storefronts. I see what I personally feel is a bad use of a lot of amazing, amazing opportunities for small businesses and, and different, you know. All different kinds of businesses to move into the area, and I think a lot of people are looking for commercial space to run their businesses, but. You know, as someone who spends a lot of money every single month on renting, I sort of regret moving to that area because of what I see. Empty storefronts, what seems like spite litigation that's gone on for way too long. Um, but I don't believe that's the fault of the city of Norwalk, actually, so. I am just here to voice my concern and say that part of me wishes I had gone to, you know, either a different area of Norwalk or maybe even a neighboring city, and I hate feeling that way, so. I'd really like, you know, something to happen. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next is Mark Allen.
Everybody, um, you know, sometimes I do speak for the Wall Street Neighborhood Association, but in this today, I don't feel it would be appropriate to project my own beliefs on the members of the association. So I'm here speaking for myself as a business owner in the Wall Street area. Uh, we're sixteen Isaac Street, we're back in the old studio. I will say this. I do remember the day that I first came to my studio. We were very excited about that. But I remember we were embarrassed by how the parking lot looked. This is before Jason bought the lot. The tree, one of the trees in our lot was overgrown so much, we sent our interns out to try to clean up the lot. One of the trees was overgrown so much, we didn't realize that there was a homeless person living underneath the tree. That's how bad it was. The lot was disgusting. There was a van in the lot that was, the girls in our studio called the rape van, it was afraid to go near. And we tried to get the police to come and respond, and they couldn't, they said, there's nothing that we could do. Uh, when Jason bought the lot, he cleaned it all. I will say that. Jason, we all know, is a pain in the ass. Sorry to say that. Um, something that I would say to his face. But. But. He's been, he's done a lot of good in the Wall Street area, I will say. He's really, really cleaned up our area a lot. And with all due respect, um, to, um, flat vernacular, um. There are a lot of new businesses that have opened in the Wall Street area in places that had been empty, like my three sons. Um, I think there, there have been a lot of businesses that have opened, uh, in properties that Jason owns and has redeveloped. The, the prior to, uh, prior to purchasing my three sons, building sixty-four Wall Street was empty for years. And but by contrast, you got the lead who owns, um, the place that, uh, on Wall Street, the place she owns, that's been empty for twelve years. It's been a long since redevelopment, no businesses going in there. You got, you got eighty-four Wall Street where the Health Club was. When I came to Wall Street twelve years ago, that was empty, and it's empty today, they don't want to rent that place. CG, uh, CGS Capital in Stanford owns that building. Eight Two Ballet, the other place that owned Wall Street, they don't want to rent it, it's been chronically empty. Jason is the only one buying properties in Wall Street where we have new businesses open. And I just want to say, I truly believe that everybody in this room wants the best for Wall Street. And I'm not here just to sing Jason praises, I'm just saying, I do believe that everybody in this room wants what's best for Wall Street. And I think that come Thursday, mediation, I think that's the best way forward for us all to get to move the ball forward. That's really all I have to say is that, please take the mediation seriously and please help us move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Next is Brian Casper.
Hello, it's my first time talking at a city council meeting, so my nerves are getting the best of me. But I think it's my duty as a citizen of Norwalk to make my voice heard. Um, again, and this is Brian Casper, I'm a Norwalk citizen, property owner, and also a business owner in the Wall Street area. Um, I do not claim to be an expert on real estate laws, zoning, et cetera, et cetera, nor the past events of what got us to this point. Um, I agree with Mark that I think everybody wants the best for the Wall Street area for the Poco development, et cetera. Um, however, at this point, I think it's important for me to even know all those past issues because we're so entrenched, everybody's been digging their heels and so heavily. Um, we're here now and the past is the past and it cannot be changed. It is clear that this developer is not interested in compromise or solutions that are based in any sort of reality that doesn't serve his own interests. Unfortunately, the time for compromising and finding a mid, middle ground is over. The city, the city council, and Mr. Mayor should begin to explore options that facilitate progress with this development that don't involve this develop, basically just feeding into his ego. I believe that there has got to be a way forward. I fully believe in interesting design solutions to figure things, problems like this out. The Wall Street area is in a state of stagnation because of this endless spat that amounts to nothing more than ego contest. I also agree with Mark Allen that a lot of things have moved into the Wall Street area, but there's also been a high turnover. This developer claims to be interested in the, the betterment of the Wall Street area, and his actions prove otherwise. He's basically getting in his own way. Unfortunately, uh, he won't stop until he wins, and any solution that's considered a win by him are not a success for Norwalk, the Wall Street area, or its citizens. The unrelenting stubbornness of this developer, it's only hurting his own business and the success of his tenants, his own tenants, people who are paying his bills. The city council, the mayor, railing have responsibility to its citizens and not one developer who pays taxes in another city. That's basically all I'm saying, thank you.
Thank you.
Rosebel Pobar.
Hello, but accent, sorry. So I am a business owner in Wall Street. I lived in Norwalk for about seven years. I know pretty much Norwalk. Um, I didn't know the mayor, but I assume everybody that I sit at here is for one single thing I'm proposing common, to help us, the people of Norwalk. So I don't know what problem I saw this lady opening a bag going outside saying, no eating. This argument hurts and make you feel angry, but it's true. Some people, they might make arguments that make you feel angry, and this person doesn't deserve my apologies. But everybody's human being and make mistakes. I just want to ask you for something. Think about the people of Norwalk. I have a business, and if this lawsuit doesn't solve, doesn't get resolved or settled soon, we are suffering in the middle. We struggle, I opened exactly the same month that was about locking down, not, um, actually Norwalk or the whole connector. So it's the worst place, the worst stack, and we struggle so far to be open. Now we are open, but we are still used to be open to this conversation and help us. Don't help Milligan, don't help yourself, just help us. Think about the middle, think about the people that are in the bottom. It's me, it's so many more people like me. I'm sorry that this is coming to you, but I'm really sure that you're a really good person and you understand my point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris, Kristen Hatta.
Hey, thank you, thank you for giving me a chance to speak. Um, but just, yeah, it's, it's nice to hear what you guys have to say, it's nice to hear what the people of the community and like in our neighborhood have to say. Um, but yeah, I mean, I, Mulligan makes a point. Um, you guys make a point, but it's not, this street is not fun to live on, uh, with the lack of, you know, vitality, like we, compared to Sono, there's so much going on. I just compared to other things, and there's not a lot going on, I don't feel safe. I've lived here since January of two thousand and nineteen, uh, by myself as a woman, and I don't feel safe in the streets here in Norwalk and, or on Wall Street. So it's unfortunate, um, and just, we need more activity and we need more clarity. Um, and things that, the, you know, things that move forward and not just talk, it's always talk, but move forward. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online that's waiting to speak? Is there anybody else in the audience who has not signed up but would like an opportunity to speak? Please step forward and state your name for the record and your address and we'll log it here.
Excuse me, I'm very nervous, okay, for my, my studio on this spot. My name is Dorian Lee Grant, I live on nineteen Isaac Street, and I look at the Tyvek Temple. And I look at the Tyvek Temple whole thing every single day. I bought that condo with my late husband in two thousand and four with the hopes and dreams that Wall Street was going to be up and coming. It was going to be beautiful with all these drawings and all these plans. For ten years, nothing was done. Finally, they started. Unfortunately, whoever was building that, I don't know why they were able to go so high on one corner. But seeing where those buildings were, I had no idea how bad it was going to be. I have to look at that every single day. It blocks my view. It blocks everything that I've ever seen before there. Those businesses that were there fell apart, most of them, because once that building went up, there was no parking. No one wants to park in that parking garage that's over there. It's unsafe. It's not what, I know you have plans to fix it now, but you have plans to fix something that's going to take another two to three years. Okay? I understand Milligan wants to help, but I don't think he's helping as much as he wants to help because it's stalling. It's just keeps stalling and stalling and stalling. No one wants to make a decision for the people who live there, who have to look at that every single day, who have, who aren't paying taxes, okay, to look at something that can never be fixed. And now to hear that there might be another year and a half before you even make a decision, it's disheartening. It really is. So I've been there for so long to see everything just go down. Those businesses that are there now, they're not going to survive because the parking is ridiculous. We have to pay in order for them to go run into a store to pick up something. It's not like it used to be. You could put a frigging coin in a, in a meter and let somebody go in. Now it's outrageous. Most of those people are older. They don't use phones, cell phones. They don't know. They're afraid to go downtown. There's a lot of different things that could happen. It could be better if you would all just, just get off your high horses, okay? Come down and realize that the people that are living there are suffering. And it's not acceptable anymore. It's gone on too many years. If it was your neighborhood or if it was you living there, how could you keep looking at that day in and day out and hoping for something? I'm still there trying to. I'm struggling to pay my bills so that I can see what's going to happen. But who knows if I'm ever going to see that? It's so sad. It really is. I don't know what the solution is, but you just need to come down and come, think about what you're doing and how long you're prolonging this. It's been years and years. That building looks like it's going to fall down. And then what? Do we wait to start up again?
You have three, three minutes and twenty-five seconds if you can start to wrap it up.
I just, I can go on forever because this is really, really sad. So I hope you all are listening, listen to the people that are there. It, it's just too much. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jordan, is there anybody else online? Uh, would you come down and state your name? And address for the record?
Hi, my name's Ava Jacobs, eighty-three Washington Street. I'm a homeowner in Norwalk and I also work at sixty-seven Wall Street, so right next to the Tyvek Temple. I think the biggest thing coming from everybody in the general area is it's just not safe. It's falling apart. It's falling into our back alleyway where we work. My boss and Mark and other people in the area offered to walk me to my car at night because it's not lit. You know, it's just, it's not a great area. I broke my foot over there because of things just not being in a good state. So I think we're all just really looking for an end, you know, for this to go on for another year just doesn't seem right for the people who spend every day in that area. It's really, it's not fun. It's not great. So.
Thank you. Jordan, is anybody else that signed online? Anybody else in the audience wish to address the council? Looking around, I think everybody in the audience already has, so for closed public participation, thank you all for taking your time. Mr. President, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for this council to go into executive session for the purpose of receiving, discussing and giving an update on litigation titled City of Norwalk and City of Norwalk Redevelopment Agency versus ILSR Owners LLC at all. Document number X O A S F S T dash C B dash one eight dash six oh three eight two four nine S S, which is currently pending the stand for Norwalk Judicial District at Stanford.
All in favor of the motion of going into executive session from the council?
Aye.
Okay, Mr.?
Quick.
We've closed for public participation. Just a minute. Did he have his hand up during? All right, we'll hold on for, okay. This will be the last speaker.
Quick question while holding. Has a link been sent for executive session?
Hi there, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is Ethan. I'm over at Factory Underground and I, I, I piped in a little late with the meeting, but, uh, you know, I just, I just wanted to say regarding the area, I mean, we've had a great day here. We had Chris Sarandon here, Susan Sarandon's husband from Princess and the Bride. I just spent two and a half hours with Wes Brown, who's, you know, a, a pretty, you know, a, a pretty big film star. And this is kind of an average day over here at Factory Underground. It's, we're bringing a lot of notables into this area, anybody from Scott Foley to Susan Sarandon and her daughter frequent here and, you know, Jose Feliciano is here probably every other week and we also have a, a tech school here that we've been developing and, you know, in, in regards to the area, you know, it's, it would certainly help if we could, uh, if we could, uh, basically address, you know, some of the, I don't, I don't know what you want to call it in the area, but just some of these buildings that are unfinished and, uh, you know, we've, we've been in business here for over, I don't know, maybe thirteen to fifteen years. I've been in this building for almost twenty years now. It'll be twenty years, you know, this next January where, where I've been here. And I think, uh, you know, it, you know, with the, it, it's been amazing what we've been able to do as a business to bring some of these, you know, these great entertainers and musicians to this area. And I think it's a great, you know, a great look for Norwalk to have a, a business like ours that's able to draw that kind of attention. And, you know, having the, the area not, it's, it's just been like this for so many years now. And I, I will say this, you know, the parking lot, when we were trying to develop this business, was just filled with, with chain link fence and, and garbage for many years, you know. Jason has taken over the parking lot and has helped, helped develop a, a, at least a, an area that looks nice now. And I'm not sure what's really happening. That, that, this has been something that I've really wanted to look into more as, as a, a person that runs business here, but why, why is it things not getting finished in the area? Why, why does it look like it looks? You know, we, we want to stay here. We want to be here. But it, it makes it tough when you're starting to bring people like this in and it looks, you know, the, the area does not look like an area that's successful. It looks like an area that's just confused. Is, is there a resolve for it? I mean, I don't, you know, I've been out of the loop with a lot of things, but is this, this meeting is to help? Is, is the idea of this meeting to, uh, to help speed that process up to resolve, you know, the, the lack of development and, and the lack of, I, I guess, the accomplishment of what's happening with these buildings? Is that what the, the idea of this meeting is?
You're at three minutes and three seconds.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking a question.
No, we understand that generally this is not a back and forth question.
Okay, yeah, this is my first time doing something like that, but I mean, I guess that, that's it, that's about it. You know, we're bringing a lot of great people. Our student base is, uh, is, is growing. And we, we would like to see the area, you know, get finished and wrapped up and, you know, it's, it's going to help everybody. What we're bringing down here is, it's going to help the restaurants.
You're speaking of wrapping up, you're three minutes and thirty-five seconds.
I'm good to go. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public participation. We have a meeting, a motion that's been passed by the council and now.
I will make a motion on behalf of the Norwalk Redevelopment Agency to go into executive session to discuss an update on litigation. I don't, City of Norwalk and City of Norwalk Redevelopment Agency versus ILSR Owners LLC at all. Second, second, all in favor?
Okay, the council and the redevelopment agency are now going into executive session. Okay, we are now back in public session. It is nine thirty-one PM. During executive session with the council, the council made no motions and no votes were taken.
Motion to adjourn? No, I'm just joking. I forgot I was on.
The redevelopment agency came out of executive session during the session. No votes were taken or motions made.
May I have from the council a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Revolus makes a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, then have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.